Pat, we're ready to go. Okay.
I'd like to call to order the Douglasoni Board of Appeals meeting for Wednesday, July 8th, at 7:05 PM. And just to make an announcement, Mr. Bombara and Mr. Holland have excused absences in tonight's meeting. And the first agenda item is case number 2020-04. It's a continued public hearing for Rebecca Laramie, 17 Huff Road. Before we get too far, I just want to let you know that we have two members out tonight. And on a special permit or variance, the applicant needs four votes for it to pass. We have four members, so it's your decision if you want to move forward tonight or you want to wait till we have a fifth member at our next meeting. That's will...
So what would... So if you don't come to a consensus, I'd just be pushed again anyway, or is that how...
No, we'd be denied.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. You need... Everybody needs four votes for special permit or variance. And we have four members.
Yeah.
And...
You're looking for 100%.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's assuming we get to the point where we vote tonight.
Mm-hmm.
But in the event that we do vote...
Yeah.
Everybody has to agree to it.
Okay.
Otherwise, you're not going to make it. He was trying to say, that's all.
I've known for about a week that one member couldn't come. And then I was just notified tonight, about an hour ago, that the second member wasn't available. So it's your choice. You... If it goes to a vote tonight, you need four out of four. If it goes to a vote at a later meeting, you'd need a minimum of four out of five.
Okay. How many people are on the board?
We have five and one alternate, total of six. But only five vote on every case.
Oh, okay. So they only, five only vote?
On it, yes.
Okay. And then if it's denied, is there an appeal process?
You cannot reapply for two years.
There is an appeal.
There is an appeal process. It's with court.
There is.
It would be to court. It would be court.
You couldn't refile for two years if you don't win an appeal. If you win an appeal, then you could come back and file, or you wouldn't probably have to.
Right.
It could get remanded back to court. You know, there's a number of things that could happen.
So I'd like to understand the other side of it. So if it's... There's an appeal process that I can go through with you folks here locally?
No. That would be court.
Court.
That would be court?
Yep.
Gets more complicated. Or we think that's more complicated.
Well, anything I deal with court would be more complicated and more costly. I really, you're just throwing this to me now.
Yeah.
Well, we can continue.
He just found out just before the meeting. So what he's trying to do is help you be fair with you and give you the option to whether you want to continue tonight or postpone it for another month and wait until there's five members that give you...
But there's no guarantee you'll have five with all this craziness going on?
Well, in 95% of the time, we have five members. This is unusual.
Yeah.
That we're missing both, two people off the board. I'm always here, Louie's always here, Lisa's always here, and most of the time Shaun's here or John's here.
Yeah. That's just a new, a freak thing, but it is what it is, so...
So we, you know, we can, we might be able to take some, some more steps. And then you, it's possible that you, you could ask for a continuance later in the meeting, right? No?
So, so if that happens, if I may, Mr. Chairman...
Yeah, go ahead.
And if you wanted to continue it, it would be limited to the members present that would have the ability to vote on it unless...
Oh, if we heard evidence tonight, you mean?
If there's new evidence presented tonight, it'd only be this group of people that could vote on it unless, unless you, that member that wants to participate files something called the mullin rule, the process, they got to fill out a form, file it with the town clerk, watch the video, so on and so forth, so...
To be a part of it?
To participate in the next meeting.
In the next meeting?
Yeah.
We've done that before. It's not too, that's not too, that has really nothing to do with you in that the meet, the member would simply watch, watch this meeting on video...
Yeah.
And then file the report with the town clerk. So then they could participate, saying that they, they understood what was going on.
And if that fifth member had questions, they just wouldn't be here to ask the questions. So now you have to continue it and let them, see if they have any questions on anything next month. But whatever you choose will...
I mean, I, I want to move forward. I've already wasted this board's two meetings. I don't really want to waste more of your time. So as nervous as it makes me, I, you know, I would like to move forward.
Okay. Great. Fine. So, um, did you have any, any other information you'd like to present to the board from, since last month?
Um, I, I sent a whole bunch of stuff to Maria just from the letters. And I guess I wasn't supposed to send it or something, or wasn't supposed to forward it to you guys. I didn't know that, but, um, so I think it's in your pocket?
Yeah, it is.
The ones you sent, was it today? Or three days?
Two days ago.
Those are in the bucket. And there's a, there's a letter that came in the mail today.
Oh, really? That must be, that must be Mary, Marilyn and Donald.
Did you see these?
I think I've got them.
Okay.
Yeah, Marilyn and Donald. A handwritten letter?
Yeah, handwritten one. Mm-hmm.
So there were three, there were three emails that were forwarded to the board earlier.
Okay.
And there were three that were provided for tonight that are new.
Okay.
And there's the one handwritten letter.
Okay. Um, let me just check and review that. So that would be my additional information. So that's seven, you think?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. I had eight people, so I'm not sure which one is missing. But I just kind of talked to my neighbors and asked them if I could email them a question and would they respond? And all of them did, that were really, really close to, do you need me to stand up or anything? You guys need me to stand or anything?
Whatever, Scott.
No, you're fine. No, you're fine.
So the folks that are the closest to this project, so Mr. Snow, Paul across the way, right next to me, the Wilsons, and then the handwritten note is from the Wences. So Marilyn and Donald, and these folks are like, like literally on top of me because on a lakefront, everyone's on top of each other. So I really, you know, wanted to make sure that they felt comfortable with the, um, the roof. So I sent them a very vanilla question. You guys have seen it. I didn't delete anything I wrote. I just forwarded everything to you guys so that you would know the sentiment in my little tiny lake community. And that's really what it is. We're a little community down there. We, you know, we've been there. Our, our... You guys got me with that first question. Let's try to go on. So we've been there for 70 years and I just wanted you to know how my neighbors feel about the roof. So that would be my additional, because you asked me, do I have any additional?
Right.
So that would be my additional. I don't know if you have all seven or eight, but...
Yeah, I received them all.
Yeah. I believe so, yeah.
Okay. Because I, I did, I have, I wrote them down as they kind of came into my inbox. So, and I did like make copies of them just in case Maria didn't have time. And, and, and...
So you have copies there?
I do. And Marilyn actually dropped a copy at my house.
So I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, in the odd event that we omitted one, I would suggest that she distribute her letters anyway.
That's fine. Sure.
Thanks. I didn't make copies and for everyone, but...
Oh, that's fine.
I think you guys have them all.
Give them, give, give, at least give them to the chairman.
Yeah.
So he's got them. So you don't have to stretch yourself.
Thank you.
Now I'll need a copy for the file, please.
Daniel, probably.
Yeah, I'll make this, I'll make this our official copy.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
I'll make sure Maria gets it for the file.
So I just wanted to know the sentiment, you know, especially from Mr. and Mrs. Snow, because they're, that's the property line that we share together. And it's, you know, we're like a little family down there. You guys asked me some questions last time about, you know, um, you know, why and all of that, why you're doing it this way or that way, because it's a lake house. And when you look out, you want to see the lake and not a big ugly roof. So that's kind of why we squared it up and, you know, made it kind of tighter along the line instead of, you know, just big and long and so. Don't have any other facts, I guess.
I know at the last meeting, the building commissioner said that he had issued a stop-work order.
He did.
And it was partially...
It was. It's still is partially. I do have, you guys, I know you guys came down, it looks done, but you get rained on if you're going to, you will get rained on. The whole, the ridge vent isn't anything that would need to be put up for safety.
But it's significantly further advanced than it was when you got the...
It is. Yes, it is.
When you got the stop-work order.
Yep. Well, Mark told me I had to make it safe, and it was not safe. Because we stopped at a point where I still had two by eight in the middle, holding the structure up. Because the rest of the rafters were up, there were no cross members up, there was nothing up. So in communication with Mark, you know, he told me to put up cross braces and make it safe. And it's up to me to make it safe. If I don't make it safe, it's on me. So I put up every cross brace, I, you know, I finished the rafters. I did not finish the project if you will get wet underneath it. And I didn't feel that had anything to do with safety. A ridge vent has nothing to do with safety. But the plywood on the end to make it, if you attach plywood to an end of a building, that makes it sturdy, right? And those cross members, and there's all kinds of cross members in between, that makes it sturdy. And, you know, whether, Mark's already called me and we went over this and, you know, he was very clear, you know, from his email that, you know, I, I read his email as make it safe, so I made it safe. That's what I made it safe. But it isn't fun. It has a tarp over it, and the tarp is screwed to it, so you don't, you know, you don't get wet. But the roof, it's not done. There's so much more to it that was done. But yes, it is, it is much safer. It is not going to fall, it's not going to hurt someone, the wind of the water, when the water, when you get a windstorm down there, it's much different than just in the woods. The wind comes off wicked, so...
I think last month, you said you had a couple of sticks up.
I did say a couple of sticks, yeah. And that's all there was, really. It was just, it was, the stick was in the middle.
And at that point, you had a stop-work order with a couple of sticks up.
And then I communicated with Mark, and he said I can make it safe. So whether I misunderstood, you know, took his email and misread it or whatever, he said it's on me, that thing falls down, it's on you. So you better make it safe and put up cross braces. So I did put more into it because I don't want it to fall down. If it falls down on somebody, it's just not, I don't have insurance to cover that, right? Because now it's going to be, oh, a building that's not signed off on falls on someone and never mind the insurance. I don't even want someone to get hurt. I don't want someone to get hurt. So there was a literal two by eight holding this thing up in the center because it wasn't completed when we were giving this stop work order.
Is Mark on?
I don't, is Mark on?
I think so.
Mark's on.
I'm here.
Hi, Mark.
How you doing?
Good. Have you been following the conversation the last...
Yes.
Ten minutes? All right. So I guess there was a question about, it's substantially more along than it was at the last meeting. Further along.
Yes. When I, she, when I issued the stop-work order, I did tell her she needs to put some cross bracing on it, on the posts and the, and the beams. But I didn't say to have put up all the rafters and put...
Put the roof on.
Put the sheathing up and put the corrugated metal roofing up. None of that was, none of that was said, I mean, if that's what you're asking.
And none of it was not said. He gave me a very blanket statement that said you have to make it safe.
But if you have questions, you should inquire with them, just...
I probably shouldn't, yeah.
You should have inquired with them before you started to build it.
I probably should have inquired even long before I built it if I had known that was a requirement, so... But it left to interpretation. If I made the wrong choice, you know, he had indicated to me in a phone call that, you know, you probably went too far and, you know, I have to take what you guys say. And, you know, he's already contacted me. And since you guys drove by, he went by and saw it as well. But it is not complete, and I told you it wasn't complete, so it's not...
Yeah.
And it doesn't need a tarp. So you get wet underneath it if it doesn't have a tarp on it.
I think that's a moot point.
Yeah, I don't think that has anything to do with, with it. I mean, a stop-work order means stop. If it, if you had to do some things to make it safe, that's one thing, but... So does it, what have any questions of the applicant?
I'm just a little confused as to why you would have continued building this, knowing what the comments were at the last meeting that you were here. You told me a couple of sticks were up. I was going back and forth trying to figure out if it was the proposed or the, the original one that was there. And we went back and forth on that. And you'd said, well, there's just a couple of sticks up, which, which is very minimal in description. Now you create, now you've completed the structure, basically. You got to put, you know, the picture you sent me is pretty much complete. I would, I would give it 90, 95%.
I'd say it's, I'd say it's all good.
Okay, in any event.
Lot to do, still a lot.
Yep, probably is. But it's substantially further along than it was before. Me personally, I'm looking at it, you had a structure that was 33 feet long. You reduced it down to 20 feet, which took 13 feet off. You had said that you were three and a half feet off the property line. If you had split that 13 feet in half, it would have put you 10 feet off the property line. It would have been a little, little easier to work with. I understand you have a challenging lot. It's only six, 60 feet wide, 60 feet plus. You did say that the conservation had no issue with the brook or, or any issue at all, whether it was the brook or the lake or whatever. So that wasn't a concern of yours. It was just aesthetics. You just didn't like the fact that it was in the backyard. But even that 10 feet off the property line, with the 20-foot structure, that puts the edge of it in the center of the lot. You still have 30 feet on the other side of the lot.
In the center of the house? So when you look out, you don't see anything?
That's the challenge of a narrow lot.
Well, it was also over the patio that was already there. So now I have to move the patio too and...
Well, it's not over the patio that's already there because you changed the shape of it. You went to a 20 by 20, and the one that you showed was a narrow, an L-shaped, if, I don't have the plans in front of me, but it was L-shaped. You had the original, it looked like the black metal poles, probably inch and a quarter going up.
Correct.
Put together with all the little fittings, made a little metal roof on it, and then it had a shed off to the, off to the right-hand side of it. Well, that's not where you put the roof over. You put up a new patio.
The patio is exactly the same, we just resurfaced it and cut off...
The patio's still L?
Well, we cut off 10 feet that we weren't going to use now.
The, the, the old roof was 20, and the old patio was 20 feet wide?
The old patio was 14 feet wide. And then it had a piece that 13 feet...
So it's bigger, it's bigger. You could have, my point is, is you had 13 feet that you, you trimmed off of this? You could have easily, 13 feet. You said it was 33 feet.
Oh, yeah.
This is what you told me, and you made a structure that was 20 feet.
What goes outside a little?
So there's 13 feet that you trimmed off. You could have easily split that in half and just pulled off the fence or property line, whatever it is that's over there, by six and a half feet. I'm not convinced that it's three and a half, five feet or whatever, looking at the pictures. We have yet to see a certified plot plan. We see the modified plot plan that you had, that somebody drew a square on it, but that doesn't mean that that's where it is. That's the challenge I'm going to have in making a decision, a decision on this, and I'm just trying to help you with your process of where you got to decide what you want to do with it. I think you're too close to the property line, but I don't know where the property line is because I don't have anything to go by.
So what would help you...
What's that?
Understand the, what, what information are you missing that you feel is vital to your decision?
Vital to my decision would, would be a reasonable distance from the property line. And I, and I don't believe that three and a half feet or five feet is a reasonable distance because you had another option that you could have, you could have pulled it off a little bit. To maintain that roof, you're going to have to be in the neighbor's yard in order to set up a ladder, to maintain it at three and a half feet. No?
Well, I don't see what you're, I don't see how you're maintaining the roof, but we can have a ladder beside it. It's a lifetime thing.
Okay, that, that's...
Yeah, that's true.
I see what you're saying.
You asked me what my thoughts were, and that's what my thoughts are.
So is that what you, what, what additional information? You're saying that you don't have something?
I don't know exactly where that structure is. You could be 10 feet from the property line, for all I know. I don't, I don't know where it is. Because I only have a square drawn on, on your plot plan from whenever it was done. Somebody put that on there.
Correct.
But that doesn't show...
That's not a certified plot plan.
No, but it doesn't show me where it is, in all fairness. I'm looking at your pictures that you sent. You have very large trees that are very close to that roof.
Yeah.
Right? Are the trees in your yard or their yard? I have no idea.
Yeah.
And I'm not trying to give you, I'm not trying to give you a hard time. I'm just telling you what I'm looking at. And you want, you want us to make a, a fair decision for you, but we really don't have accurate information to even say, well, you're too close. I don't even know if you're too close. We had one on Franklin Street that the people wanted to put an addition on the side, and the same thing came up. And they wanted to be three feet from the property line. And then when we questioned them and had them go get a certified plot plan, found out that they had an extra 10 feet on the opposite side. The house was 10 feet closer. So if we had granted that, they would have been seven feet into the adjoining lot.
Into the neighbor's yard.
Yes.
So that, that's what my point is. You really can't, just because it's been there for 70 years, 100 years or whatever, things, things happen. Me and Louie are getting along, yeah, whatever, put the thing in my yard, I don't get, Louie leaves. That doesn't mean that I own that yard.
Right.
So, and that's what my point is, is to, to come to a conclusion, to say yes or no, I don't even know what I'm looking at. Because I don't have anything concrete. And I'm not, and I'm not trying to tell you to go spend the money to get a certified plot plan. I have two concerns. I have a concern that you're that close to the property line to start with on your proposal. And I have nothing to verify that you're even there. So even with the plot plan, I'm still going to be concerned about how close you are to the property line.
Okay. And, and what, you know, what is the alternative to that, other than moving the structure? You know, if, if everyone in the area is, is, you know, this is a good structure, this is good, and, you know, what, what is the negative of a special permit to be inside those, 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 the rules around zoning?
Okay. Can I just, can I just make one comment?
Yeah.
About this?
Go ahead.
You say everybody's in you, we have eight ladders and everything else. We're sitting here right now because the neighbor complained. That's why we're here. If the neighbor never complained, we would, I wouldn't even know you. I would have never met you. That, that's, that's the whole thing. It is, people are different. It is, I can say whatever I want to Dan, but then, about Dan, but then when I see him, hey buddy, how you doing? So somebody complains, somebody has an issue with this. They made a complaint. That's why Mark came down. Mark didn't go driving around looking for a roof that was on the property line. If he did that, he'd be busy all day long. We'd have to pay him overtime. But the point is, is somebody made a complaint. You chose to keep continuing with it under your own will. It's, I'm not trying to be difficult with you, but it's, it's just, I, I feel it's too close to the property line. That's my own feeling. You need four votes out of it? You already know what my feelings are?
I'm, I'm thinking along the same lines. You, you had every opportunity to do this before you built it. And we have to look out for the best interest of 8,000 people in Douglas, not the best interest of eight or six or whatever it may be. So you really moved forward without, should have come here first. We would have told you what would be acceptable and what wouldn't. You know, so, I mean, to do it and ask for forgiveness later is not how, the way it's supposed to work.
I really didn't think I had to do anything because it was already there. I really didn't. I just thought of making it better.
All you could do was make a phone call to the building department, you would have had an answer.
I didn't even thought of it, is the thing. Like, when we're dealing with the waterfront, we call Steve Zisk right away. Hey, Steve, we're, you know, we're going to do this thing on the waterfront. Or, hey, we want to cut a tree down. I think it's close to the water.
And if you had done the same thing with the building department, we wouldn't be here.
I agree. I just, ignorance is no, no excuse. But in reality, that's where I'm at. So are you saying that, you know, you're, this is just such a, you know, this structure is just so terrible, it can't be three feet from the line? And that you need to send me off to a, a court and a judge? And then we have to do all of this again? And we have to keep going until you say it's okay? I don't, I don't know.
Well, which, I think we're trying to give you an idea of what's acceptable, and, and anything less than 10 feet.
But you've given this to other people all along that waterfront, whether it's a shed, whether it's a fence, whether it's a, a, a house, for goodness sakes. So it all had to go through, and it's not you guys. Obviously, these boards change over time.
They do.
I was going to say, and I've been on this since 2013, and I...
Well, Stewie's house was built before then, so...
Yeah, but I, I can't answer for anybody, just, just like the pilgrims.
I've been here 13 years, and I don't think anybody's come in for a variance, a special permit on Manchuck Lake, that I recall. Look?
Why don't you just get a, a surveyor to give you a plot?
Okay.
That's all. And continue this meeting tonight and just go up and, you know, roll the dice and see what you're going to get for a plot plan.
Okay. Does that help the situation?
Oh, yeah. You might come back, and you might have six extra feet.
Well, it's like I explained about the guy on Franklin Street.
Right.
Okay. And is it a long shot? Yeah, it's a long shot, and I don't want to see you spend extra money.
Right.
But me personally, this is what I look at. And I try not to make it an emotional decision. I try to be fair. I understand that, and I'm trying to be fair with you and explain to you how I'm thinking about it. I try to be fair and consistent with everybody in town. It's not... I don't... Oh, that's a bad...
I understand.
Unfortunately, I can't think of it in those terms. We have guidelines that we're supposed to go by, and we don't follow them 100%, because myself, I'm still in the learning stage, is to make sure that sometimes I screw up, and maybe I didn't follow the letter of the law on some of the things or suggestions that I'm making. But in your situation, it's pretty clear. We have our setbacks. It's not unusual, whether it's up at Walmsley Terrace or other areas. Typically, it's 10 to 15 feet on these narrow lots. We're trying to stay off the property line to be fair to your neighbors and everything else. If everybody's putting everything on the property line, it's just going to be all cluttered up there. And from a safety standpoint, from a maintenance standpoint, firefighter comes in, and he's got to put out your neighbor's shed, and he can't get to the back of the thing, because you have your roof on, whatever. These are all different considerations that have to be thought about, but...
So if you had just said, like, if you don't follow the letter of the law, I thought that's what this board did, was look at...
No, I'm saying that, me personally, when I look at the zoning rules, there are different rules as to how you interpret them.
Okay, I can understand.
Okay, so if you join the board, and you got on, you're not going to know everything that's there, and you're going to make a little hiccup here and there, and you try not to. You try to do all your homework and make sure you're paying attention. If you notice when you came in, what was I doing?
Reading the minutes.
Well, just so I understand what I'm looking at. I looked at this. I looked at the decisions. I looked at the minutes from last, all these other ones. I remember all the different ones, but...
I guess my question is, I thought you guys were the ones that kind of... Okay, you have a set rules, you have your setbacks, but you make adjustments to that. I thought that's what...
That is correct. That is correct. But none of them have been three feet in the 13 years I've been here. More in line with 10, but none of them have been three, and you really could have saved yourself a lot of effort, time and effort, if you had just...
Well, that's the whole purpose.
When you don't know, you ask. You don't just do it.
If you have the rule of being 25 feet, and you come in and you try to get relief to that. Typically, it's before it's built, but whatever. It is what it is. You're where you're at, and it doesn't matter now as to why it's there. It's just there. So now, you've got to find out if you can get the relief that you're seeking. And as I stated a couple times, I personally have issue with being that close to the property line, because you had other issues. I understand your structure was there in the middle of the yard, and you want to see the lake. I grew up in a lake, so I get it.
Yeah.
But you could have trimmed six and a half feet off one side of it and came in from the property line, six and a half feet. And if you had done that, even though you got your hands slapped because you built this thing and everything else, you probably would have walked out of here with very little inconvenience. You still had to do a plot plan, because I wouldn't have went along with it without one, because I wouldn't need to know that...
So you need a plot plan anyway, for me to verify, yes?
Pam?
I'm just trying to be practical here. You've got money sunk into that thing now.
Yeah.
You could have done it 20-foot wide instead of 20-foot or...
No, it's 20 by 20.
You've got a 20 by 20. You could have gone 16 and then added it down the long way, so that you were further away, but it wouldn't be as much in the middle of your backyard. Okay? So it could have been a rectangle. But where you're at right now, instead of a plot plan, maybe you consider moving that. I mean, I'm not sure how much a plot plan costs. It's not cheap.
It's way less than moving a structure that already is in the ground.
Yeah.
It has footings. I mean, it has footings from 100 years ago, because there was one that was so deep in the ground, it couldn't be moved when we resurfaced. That's where the... I talked about a chicken spit.
Yeah.
So it had a footing on top of a footing on top of a footing, I guess, because that's a heavy thing. I don't know. It was built 100 years ago.
Oh, it's by the lake, so they didn't want it to sink, probably.
But so that one is, like, attached to one of the footings, so I don't even know how far down that goes.
What, are you 4 by 4s around? 4 by 4?
We actually used 6 by 6s.
Oh.
Just because we didn't want it to fall down. We didn't want it to be... You know, there's wind down there, so...
Sure.
But so to have a plot plan, you know, I feel like the guy that did the first one in 2016 was fair to me. I thought he was a good guy, and, you know, that's probably another $1,500. But to move that whole roof, I mean, that's... That would be like tearing an old patio up. Patio that's already there, I'd have to tear it up and move the whole patio to be smaller. So I just... If I already had my patio and my roof there, asking for a special permit to just be there again, I don't understand why it's... I guess I just don't understand why it's such a bad thing.
Okay, so you're saying you had one that was non-conforming before?
In the exact same spot.
And, right. And you've made it more non-conforming.
And lower, so no one can see through it.
Yeah.
So by making this just a little higher, now everyone has a nice view of the... I think one of them has even said that.
That doesn't help your argument, because now you've got a nice view. You could have put it in the middle of the yard, and you'd be... You can see through it, so...
Well, they can see through it, yeah.
The point is, you're in an IRA zone. If everybody in an IRA zone built three feet from the lot line...
Yeah.
Douglas would be your city.
It would.
If everybody did what you did, we'd live in a city.
Sure, sure.
And I don't think that's...
So when I ask, so could you help in helping understand, you know, an answer to the question? If I already had the roof there, and if I had just left that metal pole that you had talked about, the black metal pole, if I had just left that pole and built the roof off of that pole and never moved that pole, would that have made a difference?
That would have been a question for the building commissioner.
Yeah.
Okay.
The building commissioner is the zoning enforcement agent, and where the zoning appeals board. So you're appealing a decision by that official?
Okay, so...
To the zoning...
That's Mark?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't think that... Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Chairman, but I don't think that's a decision that we sit there and hand out the zoning rules. I think that that would fall under the building commissioner.
Can I ask Mark that?
Still there?
I think it would be a moot point at this point, but he can answer, I guess.
Mark, if I had just left that first metal pole and built off of that metal... The metal structure that was there, would this still have been a special permit thing? I'm not sure I'm asking the question right, but do you get the gist of what I'm asking?
Well, this is a special permit, because you took down a structure, you're altering, changing, extending a non-conforming structure.
Okay. If I...
You were taking everything down. By the time I got there, I saw this new structure, and to be honest with you, I don't even think it's three feet off the line, because it's touching the tree. So that's what I saw when I got there. Then you gave me evidence to show me there was something there before, but it wasn't that close to the lot line. That roof that was there was much further to the right from the pictures. So at that point, when I switched from a variance to a special permit...
Okay.
Because I thought you were actually creating this new structure. I didn't know you had an old roof there.
Yeah, yeah. So if I had just used the same pole, would it still have to be a special permit?
Altering, changing, the non-conforming structure.
Okay.
You were making it bigger. It was neck... You were narrow, but you increased the width of it.
And decreased the length. Yeah, yeah. I did change the shape, absolutely.
And that's what triggers that.
From the pictures, to me, it looks like you're more on the property line, too.
Yeah, definitely not. I know for sure I'm not, but obviously, words don't mean anything. It has to be evidence to prove that, so I would, you know, I'd get another survey done, and, you know, maybe in the meantime, I, you know, talk to Mr. Snow and say, "Hey, can you sell me seven feet, so that I can get my special permit?" Because, you know, that's where I'm at right now, because they can't move the thing. Can't move the thing. So I don't know, you know, how we go forward.
Right.
So can I, you know, offer some additional information in getting another plot plan done, so that you folks have evidence of exactly where the current roof is, and have an opportunity to discuss this again with the board?
Sure, we can continue it, if you want to submit that to the board.
You can ask for a continuance, and that's not a problem at all.
Yeah, so I'd like a continuance.
Okay.
First one of the month, every month, right? Second, sorry.
Second Wednesday.
Second Wednesday.
Yeah, but what's the date of our next meeting, Maria?
August 12.
August 12.
Mm-hmm.
So...
I think we should... Can we push it one more month, so that I can get an attorney involved? Because I don't know how to talk to the folks' office.
You're doing fine.
No, I'm not.
Yes, you are.
I wasted your time twice. I'm going to waste your time again.
No, you're not wasting time.
I don't know if they've turned you anything on.
That's why we're here. That's right.
Can we push it an additional month?
Well, that would be September 9.
Is that bef...
One month before my daughter gets married.
That's... Labor Day is the Monday before? I'm just... I don't want to get tied up too much with Labor Day or holidays, so...
Will that cause people to not be here?
Well, that's what I'm... You know, I don't want people to take me on vacation.
All right.
So the answer to that is...
Let's make a motion to continue.
Yeah, can I ask a question?
Sure.
If we vote to continue it to the next meeting, over the next week, if she finds that she needs more time, can she request through Maria to extend it again, and do we need to vote on it?
I think we should do it here, Mike.
Okay, no, I'm just asking. I don't know. Again.
Does she feel she needs two months?
Yeah.
Two months? That's okay.
Yeah?
Yeah, that's fine.
Is that what you would like?
I'd like you guys to just say yes.
Well, no, I understand that, but you...
I'm going to need two months, because I'm not going to keep going this way, so...
You understand that you get yourself in this predicament?
I really felt that because we had been there for so long, that the roof had been there for... Before my memory, even before I was ever even there, I really didn't think it was an issue. There has to be some kind of a grandfathered something that says, "If I already occupied that space, I should be able to occupy it still." There shouldn't be anything that you guys get to tell me.
But you've enlarged it.
That's...
You know, excuse me?
Go ahead, Lou.
You... And you're right. I'm on your side. But the problem is this: You should have never took nothing down.
That's correct.
Right.
When you take it down, it goes back. You know, it's like the old story, you know? You have people sometimes that come in, and they say they're just going to do this and do that, and all you've got to do is get a surveyor to go up there, and we'll all find out where you are. You don't know where you are. I don't know where you are. Nobody here knows where you are.
But I'm going to be three feet or four feet. I'm going to be four feet.
You don't know. You might be... You might have enough. And the surveyor, if you tell him this, he'll do it for the same price.
How much you need? Tell me how much you need, and I'll go get it.
Well, he'll do...
How much space do you need?
No, he will turn around and put it right on that lot.
He will, yes, but I now have to go get space. I now have to ask Mr. Snow.
No, he'll make it... No, he can change it. He can shape it. He can make it reach your... Am I right, Bill? He can make it fit the lot. You haven't gotten... You just went out and put... You've got to get some... You've got to get some bearings. You've got to know where you are.
I got to show you guys where I'm at, but I know I'm going to be almost exactly what I told you. I don't do things halfway.
So you're pretty sure that...
I'm positive.
Yeah.
I'm positive. So that means I now have to go get land, so that I can get this special permit, so...
Okay.
But you don't know. You don't know.
Yes, sir, I understand that, but...
Are you telling me there was markings out there, and you just said, "To hell with those markings"?
No, they were always there. They were behind my shed.
Okay.
They were actually almost underneath my shed. So when I moved off the line, I thought, "Hey, I'm doing a great thing." Shed was like two feet off the line. You can see it on my... On the official... The guy that drew the picture the first time. So the shed was there. The pet... Well, he doesn't draw a patio. He only draws roofs, right? He only draws buildings. So you can see that I'm literally on the line. The pictures for the old roof showed that we touched the trees. We literally had to cut with a chainsaw. We had to cut the soffit of the shed, because the tree was growing to the shed. So by coming off the line, you know, two, three feet, we thought that that was a good thing. We talked to Mr. Snow. "Hey, what do you think?" And so we kind of all came to, you know, took everyone's thoughts and said, "Hey, we're still kind of here. We've got to talk to Steve, because we can't go that way, because that's the brook. We can't go that way, because that's the water. So we'll just stick right here where we were." So I thought there was some kind of a... "You're already there." It was some kind of a grandfather, "Hey, you're already there."
Yeah, but just like you checked with conservation...
Right.
You should have checked with the building department, and you wouldn't be in the situation you're in. I mean...
So am I being penalized for not checking in with you?
No.
No, 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 no. Not being penalized for...
For being too close to the line.
You have to be 25 feet from the lot line. You're not.
I never was.
I understand that.
So I...
But like Lou said, you tore it down.
Tore it down.
You should have left it up.
You can't tear it down. You should have replaced it one board at a time.
No.
A big misstep.
Someone said that, you know, you have to keep a wall up or something, and if you keep a wall up, then you're fine.
Yeah.
But then, you know, Mr. Snow built this month, you know, this big, beautiful house, know, this big, beautiful house, you know, only 10 feet off the line, and he got your permission here. I don't know how long ago.
I don't either.
But it's, it's not, I mean, it's 13. It's probably more than 13 years old, I'd say. So, and his shed's right on the line.
Yeah.
And so I just, you know, somebody gave him a variance. Somebody gave him permission to build those houses. So why are?
But, excuse me, the house, you just said that it was 10 feet off the line.
I'm guessing.
I know that, I know that, but think of what I said to you is, on these narrow lots, we're typically 10 to 15 feet off the lines.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay? That house is 10 feet off the line, roughly. That's consistent with what I said. So as far as the shed that's there, I seen it in the picture. There's a white shed to the left in the picture that you sent in.
And it came.
But we don't have no knowledge of that.
It came to this committee because it's big talk on the lake about the two that fought about it. Because the person that didn't want.
Well, you know, we had to discuss your case, so.
Right. But I'm setting precedent that it came here and it was voted, and it is just as close to the line as this current roof project. So I'm not, I don't understand why, you know, one committee can say yes to the exact same thing and another committee says no.
Because there's no such thing as precedent. Every circumstance is different.
We can't speak for anything that happened in the past.
No.
So.
I'm voting for you. So don't tell me.
So, not to be rude, but can I make the motion to grant her her two week, two month extension, sorry, two weeks, two-month extension?
Yep.
Continuance?
What is that, October meeting day?
Oh, September.
At 7:00 P.M.
Okay, September, okay. All right.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick to continue the meeting till September 9 at 7:00 P.M. We have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Holmes. All in favor of the continuance? Aye.
Aye.
Roll call vote.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Aye, Dan Hinni.
Aye, Pam Holmes.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Aye, Louis, does he know?
You like that, huh?
Okay. We'll see you on September 9.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
We don't have no discussion. Oh, we only got all these minutes.
I don't think we have all of these, do we?
Yeah.
I only got January, February, and March.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I have January, February.
We also have the McIntyre.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Decisions.
I read that.
Oh, yeah, January, February, March, and June.
January, February, and March.
Yeah, June.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Bill, I did find it. Thank you.
Did you put me up on the board?
You better.
Did you put me on the board?
No, you're on the big screen.
That's all right.
Yeah, you're on the.
A. Look at A up there.
Yeah.
I don't know if anybody had an opportunity to read the minutes prior to the meeting or if you want to take time to do it now.
Actually, I did. It's very late. What are we working on? Where are we?
January.
January, okay.
I remember that. That was when we were talking about the fee schedule, the engineers.
We agreed with that McIntyre thing, right?
Yep.
It was voted approved. Does anybody have a motion concerning the January minutes?
I'll move we approve the minutes of January 8, 2020, as written.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Holmes to approve the January 8 minutes as written. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Fitzpatrick. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Need a roll call on that?
Yep. Aye, Dan Hinni.
Pam Holmes, aye.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Louis, does he know, aye.
Okay. What are the February minutes, Lou?
North Brown stuff gets confusing in there. I'll move we approve the minutes of February 12 as written.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Holmes to approve the February 12 minutes as written. We have a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Tosino. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, I'm going to abstain. I was not at that meeting.
Roll call.
It was a fun one, too.
Yeah. Dan Hinni, I abstained.
Pam Holmes, aye.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Does he know, aye.
Okay. Okay.
I'll move we approve the minutes of March 11, 2020, as written.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Holmes to approve the minutes of March 11 as written. We have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzpatrick. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, Dan Hinni.
Pam Holmes, aye.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Does he know, aye.
This is pretty lengthy and I didn't see them until tonight.
We can wait.
Wait until next month?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll postpone the approval of the June minutes until, I'm meeting in August.
Can we get a copy of that planning board comment on page number 2020-04 for next meeting? Oh, and for two meetings in September?
Which project is that?
Huh?
Which project is that?
Laramie's.
Oh, okay.
Just so it's part of our package for that when she comes back.
All right. I have the, a couple of invoices that need to be signed so they can be paid. And I have the original copies of the decisions for the variance and a special permit for McIntyre.
Yeah.
So I believe they were emailed to everybody.
Yeah. And Maria gave us a copy anyways.
Yeah. I'll pass this around. Has two invoices and then the McIntyre.
Yep. Thank you.
Um, the correspondence from planning board for Laramie's when she comes back in September. So it's in our package. And the only reason I'm asking that is because of what's in our minutes.
Yeah.
But we're not talking about that now, so I guess I can't look at it.
Ah, that's true.
Yeah.
Mike, you can start with those two. This is the decision, right?
Yeah, it should be McIntyre decision. Had a variance and a special permit.
Okay, so.
That's for the invoices.
Yeah.
My goodness. My goodness, goodness.
Yeah, you got to sign the back page of this one, Dan. Oh, you didn't sign any of it yet. I'm like. Anybody need Mark for anything?
Nope.
No. Thank you, Mark.
Oh, Mark, I have a question.
He's gone.
Okay.
Shoot.
Shoot? Did you say shoot?
I said shoot.
Okay.
Almost made it, Mark. Should have hung up.
I might not have an answer, though.
Well, okay, so I have a question about concrete steps.
Yeah, yeah.
On a new construction. I'm driving by a new construction and seeing them literally not on the ground.
They bolted into the foundation. They don't need to be.
Oh.
Yeah.
So there's just, there's like a crawl space for any little critters under there that I can see?
No, they, they'll push dirt under it and backfill under it.
Okay.
I don't like it myself particularly, but.
It's bizarre.
It's like a bulkhead.
Huh?
Like a bulkhead, set of stairs. There's four, there's four rods that go in, that get drilled into the foundation. They nut it on the other side.
Okay.
It's me putting them on a house, but.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, but that's if they don't pour them, that's if they don't pour them in, right?
Yes.
Yeah, this is a separate, yeah, it's separate. They were dropped in, yeah, precast.
I know the house you're talking about.
Oh, thank you. It's driving me nuts. Thanks, Mark.
All right. Anything else?
No, we're good, Mark. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, good night.
Thank you, Mark.
Have a good night.
Good night.
I was supposed to get Mac the package.
Well, when you forget those ties, you know, the ones that go in the cement, you know, the Yankees.
Thank you, Secretary.
The Yankees, huh?
Like Hilton?
No, you got to go way down. They let this one down the cape, we're down the cape now. And I'll tell you something, they got 130, 35 mile an hour winds, right?
Yeah.
And this guy got his own foundation tied.
So.
My man went down there. I said, no, no, we're not going to do the, no. You tell him to put them in and get them inspected.
Yeah.
Okay? Of course, my salesmen, everybody gets mad at me. I said, no, no, we're not going to do this. We're not going to do it. Have something crack. See, they should be hooked on to the, what do they call it, in the foundation.
Oh, the footing?
No, they should be.
Oh, rebar?
The rebar. It should be hooked right into the, how are you going to hook in the rebar now?
Right.
Right, yeah.
You can't hook in the rebar. So they're telling me this. I said, no, not involved. The house blows away. I want to make sure it takes everything with it. I don't want.
You want the.
The foundation, too.
Yeah, right, right. Okay.
All right. Under discussion, we had, we had the application for site plan review that the planning board received for 93 Davis Street.
Right.
And I know Maria sent the stuff out. I read through a good part of it, but.
Yeah, it's for comments. Here's what you're looking for. I don't know, they're neighbors of mine, so we're just about, right, Louis?
Is ours 91 or 93?
This says 93 on this.
And that's ours?
Yep. So, I mean, isn't any, they're asking if we have any comments.
I mean, obviously, it's on 16. So Mike, my only concern is knowing what happened when Caroline's opened and on occasion when they have musical, you know, accoutrement, you know, at their place, and you get traffic.
Snoop Dogg.
No, yes. I mean, it just, it's on with 16, so it's a concern. Oh, and didn't I see something about, the other thing that I thought odd, and I will admit that I have a couple of hats on in bringing this up. I think that they're requiring, when it's open, police presence. And I'm thinking, so how is that going to happen? Is it police presence or is it just a safety guard? Or what is the actual requirement? But they did say that. And that's a lot of hours a day, and we only have so many policemen in town.
Yeah, but if they had a detail like that, that would be on the town. They would have to pay for the detail.
And I understand that. But I also look at hours and hours working by people. And it's going to be open seven days a week, seven in the morning, whatever time in the morning.
Typically, and typically, details like that are done on your days off. They don't take them off regular patrol. They use that day off.
Or they use another town.
Okay.
When we have luxury of paying for details, we have to pay time and a half, right, Lou?
Yeah.
That was not cheap.
And I believe there's discussion.
And that's typically done on their days off.
About overflow parking, which I don't think had gotten resolved last I knew.
Okay. Yeah. Well, pack up, school parking lot, maybe.
They got a block there.
Bust them down.
They're not using the school, go ahead.
They're not using the schools. Should have made that one be part of.
Now, we.
You already got the cafeteria for when they get hungry.
Hungry is.
So should we just refer to any comments at this point?
Yeah, I don't have any.
Or parking, yeah.
Any substance, because I think it's all being addressed with conservation and.
Mm-hmm, planning.
Planning.
Yeah, I guess those neighbors are concerned, or at least one of them is.
Yeah.
So.
Couple, I think. All right, well, we don't have any other agenda items. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I just have one question from Maria. And it was having to do with one of the minutes that we looked at in Old Colony Road. We had a case that was on Old Colony Road. There was a lady, and evidently, her name is Sullivan, who brought the plans for the road. Have we contacted her so we can get those plans for her file?
We lost those?
Or do we have them still?
That was for.
German.
Collins.
Yeah, Collins. I could get in touch with her.
Well, I just, for completion's sake, you know, it would be good for the town to have access to that. You know, it's not.
She had had it all.
Old Colony, yeah, Old Colony's not going to go away. You know, Colony Road and, I don't know.
Sure. I could remember somewhere.
It's written on the plan.
Anybody else?
No. Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Mrs. Holmes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, Dan Hinni.
Pam Holmes, aye.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Does he know, aye.
Okay, the meeting's adjourned at 8:12 P.M.
With the humidity.
Good job.